And we have Spanish translation today, Vivian?
Muy buenas noches y bienvenidos de parte de la junta directiva del distrito escolar de Santa Barbara. Si hay alguien que necesita el ayudo de un intérprete, por favor levante la mano para darle un audífono. Gracias. Thank you. Okay, and also like to announce that we have headsets for anyone who needs assistance with hearing. Are there any public comments at this time?
We have one public comment, Kate Smith.
Ms. Smith?
President Cordero, members of the Santa Barbara School District Board of Education. This is the DVD of Brian Sarvis when Jonas Pizito was speaking stating there is rampant and severe retaliation against whistleblowers in this school district. And the superintendent was videotaped by my videographer, Michael White, saying, "Bull." I have been written half a dozen letters by your lawyer, Craig Price. And those letters are violations of my civil rights, they, under the Constitution, and under Americans with Disabilities Act. You've been notified that I do have protection under ADA. I have some very rare disorders. And I have let you know in writing to document things that have happened to me at meetings, not videotaped, that I was at risk. So, I want you to know, there are serious concerns and complaints against this school district regarding my daughter's education. I'm following the protocol set out in this settlement agreement of Santa Barbara School District versus Emily Rose Smith. I have let you know several times, there are breaches of settlement contract. So, I had my GEBSER meeting. I have yet to find anybody who knows what that is. Please, Google "GEBSER," G-E-B-S-E-R, "GEBSER letter." Reed Martin has instructed parents in special ed to learn to write a GEBSER letter. It breaks down the immunity of the administration and the board when there's a conflict unresolved and it goes to due process or civil lawsuit. I'm very upset that you would have a meeting to spend thousands of consultant dollars to hire a consultant to look for a replacement. We know every single firm. They're known throughout the country. Michael Caston helped to hire the person that was hired for Monacito Union. And it just seems that, you know, we're really tired of this kind of behavior. And we are amassing to expose school and government corruption. Thank you very much.
Okay, that concludes public comment. Thank you. We will move on to the consent agenda. Would anybody like to pull either of those items? And I will take...
President Cordero, may I speak to B1?
Certainly.
In putting this item on the agenda, we're notifying the public that we're finalizing negotiations and we're about to approve an agreement with the Santa Barbara Teachers Association. However, we would prefer to list it on this agenda. If the board has some discussion about it, that would be fine. But we'd like to bring it back to the next agenda as a second reading and approval. And we'd like to do that in just one week's time. I don't know if you'd like to have any discussion about it?
Do we need discussion at this time? Do board members wish...
I don't need discussion on that, but I think I need a little explanation on B2 then. They seem...
They're joined.
So, they're joined together, so we're just essentially having a first reading for those two and we won't take action on the consent today?
Yes.
Okay.
Mrs. Cordero, I did have just one comment. And I did run this question by Mr. Smith, but on B1, under Article 8 evaluation procedure, where the language says, "The parties agreed to form a subcommittee to review the current evaluation instrument and if necessary, create a new evaluation instrument." My question was, who defines if something is necessary or not? And Mr. Smith had an answer for me.
Yeah, obviously, anytime you arrive at a tentative agreement, it has to be mutually acceptable to both parts. In this case, it'd be the school board. So, since we didn't have something in place and we knew there'd be a significant amount of time that would take to work out the bugs in this thing, we kind of held it in abeyance so we can move forward with the rest of the issues.
Okay. That... Sorry, Mr. Herron?
One other question I'm going to need an answer to at some point. How could I distinctly say this? If we weren't approving this, how would this million dollars affect the 5.5 million that we have to come up with?
Well, you would have to either use it to hire new staff, retain existing staff, or use it for compensation. So, it would have helped you with fund balance and for that reason, and since it's one-time revenues, it's not going to help you on an ongoing basis to deal with the structural deficit because the issue you have is an ongoing imbalance between revenue and expense. So, it'd be similar to the RFP, but not as flexible. That's the best way I could put it.
But would it help us not let teachers go for the 211, 212 school year?
You could, in theory, retain some of those from that. That's correct. But you're just pushing the problem forward here.
Well, but we're going to have to push the problem. We're going to have to solve the problem anyway. Would this help us solve it?
It'll help you. It would help you under that scenario. Theoretically, it could help you stop it for a year, but you would mask the problem and you would have the, because of the compounding nature of that, it would be bigger the following year. That's always the difficulty in using one-time revenues to deal with an ongoing imbalance between expenditure and revenues. It's bad fiscal policy. We've done it sometimes on the necessity.
Yeah, but good fiscal policy is spend it and then we're about to problem...
Well, I mean, you don't have total flexibility with it. It's not like RFP, you can only use it for specific things. We might be able to find some ways to shoehorn it into an area where we could free up unrestricted fund balance, but it would be very difficult to do within the existing restrictive nature of the program requirements. And believe me, when we look at all this stuff...
But it would save some jobs, possibly?
It could save some jobs.
Thank you.
For one year?
For a year.
Well, that's... To some teachers, that's a very nice year to save, yeah.
When does this money have to be spent by? Is there a deadline on this?
By September of 2012.
Thank you.
What are the benefits to spending this money this month versus waiting a couple months before we see?
Well, we did kind of work with our classified employees to hang on to some of it, but because of the issues, you know, we're dealing with SPTA, you know, we pushed it forward into January, they would rather have had it paid in December. You know, in any negotiation, there's give and take. It would be very difficult to go back to them now and say, "Well, hey, you know, we're not going to do it in January, we're going to do it in March, we're going to do it in June."
Ms. Deacon?
One thing that occurs to me, because these are payments that would go to all employees, is that our health benefit costs have gone way up for employees. And so, this is a way to offset those expenses to all of our employees and in some sense, make life easier, better for them because they're certainly struggling under these increased costs, all of the employees are.
I'm glad you said that because that has been said in public by the board. And obviously, they heard that and that was, even though they don't want that explicitly linked in the proposal, that was a discussion that took place.
Okay. Mr. Smith, this, or maybe this is for Dr. Sarvis. This will be on our next agenda, not on the consent agenda, correct? It'll be on the action agenda?
We can put it on the open action agenda if you'd like to have more discussion of it at that point.
Would board members prefer to have... Okay. Okay, so then we will not take action on this, on our consent agenda, because we are not approving these at this time. We just have them on our agenda as our first reading. So, we will move then. And I will encourage board members to forward questions ahead of time to any staff members that may be appropriate. If you have further questions about any of the items in those two, in B1 and B2. We will move on then to our action agenda, sort of our main purpose for this meeting in a review of discussion of the executive search firm proposals for the recruitment of a new superintendent and selection of finalist executive search firm proposals to present to the Board of Education at a special meeting that currently is scheduled for February 1st, 2011. So, our expectation is that we would, excuse me, that we would try to reach agreement on our top, I would quote, "three or four firms" that we will invite to be interviewed on February 1st. We had eight proposals submitted. We've all read through them. Ms. Deacon and I took the responsibility of going through this. I won't say necessarily any more thoroughly than anybody else because I assume we all went through them pretty thoroughly. But we just had a little bit of discussion, trying to winnow down and see what we could come up with to help move the discussion along. I think Ms. Deacon was able to contact a couple of references for a few of the firms. I had some sort of unexpected commitments today and wasn't able to reach the firms that I had intended to. I do have some who are going to be returning emails and phone calls to me shortly, however. So, with that, I think I will allow Ms. Deacon, perhaps, to present some of the information that she was able to find and what we talked about in terms of these eight proposals that we received. There were, we felt, a couple that seemed less directly suitable to our purposes than the others, and then others that we thought were maybe a little bit more suitable. But I imagine we all have our pros and cons for these. So, we'll present these and then we'll take further discussion.
Well, maybe I will start with, Mrs. Cordero and I kind of split up who we called references on, and I'll start with those that I was able to speak to some of the individuals about. The first one that I had was the Leadership Associates, which, as you know, having read their prospectus, that they have done a lot of searches in California and locally as well. And so, I actually spoke to several board members locally who cited their professionalism. They thought that they were well organized. They specifically singled out Rennie, which is, I guess, how you pronounce her name, Rennie Thompson?
Reenie.
Reenie, okay. Reenie, as someone that they thought was exceptionally good. And I did note that the other associate that they are suggesting, Rich Thon, is bilingual, which I thought was a nice bonus there. In several districts, it wasn't a unanimous selection by the board when they went with Leadership Associates. I had one board where there was a split board, actually, up north. And while they cited the professionalism, they actually are not, part of their board are not happy with their final selection a year out. And so, the message that I took away from my discussions with them about Leadership Associates and also actually about some of the other firms that I called on is that it behooves a board to go into any arrangement with any certain firm with your eyes open and to understand that these firms are working with a set group of individuals. A couple of board members I spoke to thought there were some efforts to position certain candidates in a more favorable light than others. And so, they cautioned that we just be aware of that and do our due diligence. But in general, the Leadership Associates got very favorable ratings in terms of their professionalism. Dave Long and Associates also, I spoke to two board members in two different districts, actually, both of them in the San Diego area. The associate they worked with was Bill Dietrich, William Dietrich, who's also one of the associates that's called out in our proposal. They liked him a lot. One of them, Uriela, said that they really pushed for a national search. And initially, they got some pushback from Dave Long and Associates on that because this board member's sense was they were more comfortable doing California searches. But ultimately, they ended up with a superintendent from Colorado, who they've had for four years now and that they liked. So, there were positives there. Again, I was warned, actually, by another individual from another district who didn't use this firm, but just cautioned upon the diligence of scrutinizing why a firm might promote one candidate over another. And the Rayan Associates, which was another group that I called, I actually spoke to the wife three or four times of the Oakland School Board president, did not get to speak to him, but have, you know, we've been playing phone tag, I'm sure I will speak to him. Both Oakland and Sacramento were the two California firms that this, I mean, sorry, the two California school districts that used this firm. One of my concerns was that these are much larger districts than ours. They did recruit, at least in the case of Sacramento, from out of state. And someone hadn't even really been a superintendent much, was more of a CEO kind of superintendent. But I don't see the profiles of the districts in California that they have recruited for to be very similar to ours. Also, one of their board members in Oakland is one of the associates of this search firm. Hazard, it's H-Y-A. I didn't talk to anyone there personally, but I did hear from some of the other districts that I spoke to, this was their second choice. And I did notice that one of the associates that they're putting forward appears to be a Spanish speaker with ties to the Hispanic community, and I thought that looked promising. So, those are specifics that I learned about some of these firms. I mean, maybe now I should just stop and let other board members provide their input. Were those the ones that...
I, yes, I also was trying to contact the Oakland School Board with no success, although they offered to let me speak to the superintendent, which I thought was probably going to be a little bit counterproductive. I was also a little bit surprised that I emailed, but it could be various reasons for that. The Oxnard reference that H-Y-A had and didn't get a response. And it was a person that they had listed as a reference, so I was a little bit surprised not to get a response from them. But it could have been that I will shortly, et cetera. So, when we looked at these, I don't know how the board would like to proceed. I don't know if you would like us to identify the two that we thought were less compatible with our needs, or if the board would like to just run down each of these individually?
I'll start. I was sort of expecting some winnowing by the two of them.
Okay.
That's what I was expecting.
Okay, well, I will tell you and then we can see if there's any objections to these. The two that we felt probably were the least consistent with the, well, with what we were looking for in the firm, were the Wendell Chun ELS and RJ Gaddy Associate. And just for various reasons, those just, in a pool of fairly strong proposals, those just didn't seem as close to our needs as others. So, are there either of those two that anybody felt were strong and wants to make an argument for keeping in the pool?
I don't...
Ms. Lamont?
I don't really want to make an argument to keep in the pool, but I am curious that RJ Gaddy listed that they did a search for Santa Barbara School District. One of that. I'm just...
Well, you saw that the list went back to 1990. And we haven't had a search since Dr. Caston, correct?
That's right.
So, it would have been, and I also was noticing that it was for Santa Barbara Elementary District, although it would have been for both districts, so that felt very dated.
How about forever ago?
A long time ago.
It hadn't been quite long time ago because we aren't even, I'm not even sure that it was the one for Dr. Caston, so...
It could have, likely to have been before that.
Yeah.
Can I? The only thing I saw about these two that you talk about is that, I broke it down into three categories: out of state, small, independent, and large. And these two, we'd be dealing with the principles of the firm. And so, I kept one of them, I just, I don't know how many we're going to hear, but thinking that maybe one from each category might be interesting.
Well, that's certainly a possibility. One of the concerns we had with the, I'll tell you, Ms. Deacon, you can join in too. With the Chun firm, with the Wendell Chun firm, we were concerned that there were no letters of reference and there were no dates associated with the searches. And we were concerned that they might have been, we don't know how recent they were. We also felt that there was less detail in some of the proposal in terms of what the process would be and the timeline. With the Gaddy Associates, RJ Gaddy, we were concerned that, because it did appear to be a fairly small firm, that there would possibly be less availability to us. We would have, we might have fewer contacts, less networking, that it didn't seem to be as all-encompassing as some of the other firms. And that was our concern. But certainly, we can entertain those two if other people feel, if you'd like to add anything, Ms. Deacon?
One other thing we noted on ELS was that that firm, which is a single individual firm, I think, is preparing to do the CSBA search for their executive director right in the timeframe that we would want someone to be ramping up. And we thought that was probably a fairly large task and therefore might divert from our own search. Regarding Gaddy, I also, I mean, I guess my feeling was it's two individuals, a husband and wife team, and I just was a little afraid, again, that they might not have the depth and the breadth and the experience. A lot of their searches seemed dated to me, quite old. And some of their recommendations, like visiting the communities of multiple finalists, seem out of sync with what we've heard at CSBA is probably the preferred method to approach that. So, those are some flags on those two.
Just on these two, I had eliminated them from my shortlist as well for a lot of the reasons that you say, for the Gaddy and Gaddy. What I was noticing, I mean, it's 30 years' worth of searches. And what I was seeing is a lot of searches that I know have happened more recently in some of these districts that didn't use this firm, including, this is one used us, right? Yes, we're on this list. So, I thought it would be better to have stronger firms, even though they might be out of state or in-state, than these two firms that are, I think, a little bit weaker for our purposes.
Ms. Lamont?
The one thing I did note about Gaddy that I thought was good is they were one of the proposals that had more detail in their ranking system for first round that I thought was helpful. They had category one, category two, category three. All names would be forwarded but ranked. And so, I thought that would be helpful, so more as a, as we move forward, something to think about.
Right. And actually, one of the positives that I saw for them too was that they included some of the materials that we had requested on our RFP, a lot of, well, I think they were the only ones who actually did. But I was, I didn't feel that it was as in-depth or as current as I might have, you know, hoped. So, at any rate, at this time, can we put those to aside and look at some of the others and see if we find them more suitable for our purposes? We found, we felt the COSCA group, the Dave Long group, Dave Long and Associates, Hazard, Young, Atiya and Associates, and the Leadership Associates, sorry, were reasonably comparable. We thought those were, they all had...
Which four?
Sorry.
COSCA, Dave Long, H-Y-A, and Leadership. And we felt those were all pretty close in terms of, they each had strengths, they each had their own individual, I would, not necessarily characterize them as weaknesses, but areas where we might have some questions. And then, I felt, I was interested in having some discussion about PROACT because, and we had a little tiny bit of a split perspective on this. I was encouraged that they promised ethnic balance in the candidate pool, but at the same time, a little, you know, unclear how they could, how they might go about ensuring I think, I don't want to speak for Ms. Deacon, but I'll just, I'll try to summarize what I think was your concern there. And that was that it could have been just rhetoric, trying to sort of tell us what they thought we wanted to hear. So, we were a little split on that one. I have to point out that COSCA is the only other firm that made reference at all to the issue of diversity. I was actually a little disappointed that the other firms didn't identify how they would ensure diversity in their recruitment. And then RNA was kind of another wild card, I guess, if you want to describe it that way. So, I think, we thought the strongest four were COSCA, Dave Long, H-Y-A, and Leadership. We thought the other two had, Leadership Associate, sorry, PROACT and RNA had some strength and certainly, there might be other, other board members might want to make a case for those. But so, at this point, maybe we should just entertain some of those, some of your questions?
So, actually...
Or comments?
I thought Rayan Associates had a little bit more of speaking to attracting a diverse applicant. And, I mean, they were the, for me, the only proposal that was very specific on even listing women and kind of just different marketing tools on page 30 at the very top. So, I didn't see as much of that in the COSCA or PROACT.
I agree. I think the COSCA was very limited, but it did mention it.
One of the Rayan Associates also was Spanish, very deep background in Spanish.
I'm sorry. Yes, Ms. Parker?
I actually agree with your top four that you came up with. I mean, one of the things that I was looking at...
I'm sorry.
I, I actually agree with your top four that you came up with. I mean, one of the things that I was looking at, um, and I, I, I kind of questioned, questioned HYA because it's the same situation, same situation, these out-of-state firms that clearly have very limited experience placing superintendents in districts in California. And, um, for the ones that do, they tend to be at really large districts that sort of seem to, I think, they may attract, it might be interesting to a real, to somebody that's in a large district in another state that's interested in moving, um, you know, may want to take on, uh, something that will get them wider publicity, but we're not that kind of district. And, um, so I had concerns for all three of the out-of-state, um, firms. The, the one reason that I was more interested in HYA is because of who their consultants were um, that would be working with us. And, um, and both in their case and in Leadership Associates' case, um, they didn't necessarily articulate how they would seek out diversity in the proposal, but they presented us with consultants that would clearly have that as a priority um, or, and be able to, to do it if we explained what our priority was. So, um, that's why I included them in my top four, so.
So perhaps we could see if there were any unanimous choices for the top four to start with. Yours for the same as ours?
Yes, although there is one other thing that I want to add, and that's about Leadership Associates. Um, I have had personal experience with them, um, as a reference. So I've been on the end where I got the call for a reference check. And it's been several years ago at this point. But I was so struck at the time by, um, how thorough they were, the time they spent with me as a reference on the phone, the questions that they asked. Um, I remember thinking at the time that this is exactly the sort of process I would want if my board were going through this. Um, and so I do want to share with you that, that I've had that experience with them. And so they would definitely be on my shortlist.
Okay, yes, Ms. Deacon?
And an additional perspective, and I'm not sure if I mentioned this, but in my phone calls, I ended up talking to Paul Turnbull, who is the superintendent in San Inez, and he was actually recruited by them. And so I was getting the phone number of, of his board president, but I said, so what was it like to be on the other end of the equation? And as a candidate, he felt like they, um, were respectful, very thorough, were good on follow-ups. So that was an interesting perspective, just to hear it from the candidate's position as well as, um, from the board's position.
Okay, um, Ms. Lamone?
So on my shortlist, I share, um, HYA and Leadership Associates. COSCA and, uh, DLNA, I can be convinced, um, either way. But actually, on my top list was also RAN Associates. I like what they did in Oakland, so.
Okay. So that's a, that's one that we probably need to take a closer look at and maybe have a fuller discussion with all board members on that particular proposal. Mr. Herron?
I can cross off PROACT. RAN Associates, HYA, both were on top of my list. In fact, I couldn't choose between two of them. David Long, um, I thought was a weak proposal. As Ms. Deacon mentioned, going to this with the eyes wide open. And I'd have to say about Leadership Associates, although it's a very, very good proposal, um, I was endorsed by a member of that firm, but I know the flack that resulted. If we go with our eyes wide open with Leadership Associates, there will be some flack. We should be aware of that.
Can I ask, are you talking about Mike Caston?
I didn't name any names.
Oh, I'm, I'm gonna name names because, because he's a consultant. He works with them, but he would not be our consultant, so.
No, but the association will bring out flack.
Okay, so your concern is that the association with particular individuals who are members of that, um, group, um, would create some sort of, uh, pushback from the community?
Certain, certain elements of the community will give us pushback.
Okay, and, and I.
And he's, he's a friend of mine. I like him very much. As I say, he endorsed me, but I'd be the first to say that just by him endorsing me, there was flack.
And I, I tend to agree with that, that there probably, that I think there would be feedback response from the community, um, if we were to choose that, choose their organization. However, depending on whether we decide to interview them or not, I think, um, I want to make sure that we interview the, the firms that we think are the strongest and then perhaps consider that issue at the time that we're making the ultimate choice. Okay, so it seems like, uh, I'm sorry, Mr. Herron, you said you also had RNA?
I had RNA, HYA, David Long, and Leadership. But I thought David Long was a weak proposal.
Okay.
And I guess, I liked HYA particularly because they went year by year and by size of districts, showing who they represented. And even in two thousand and ten, they have a good cross-section of districts. I thought their proposal from that standpoint, um, was very good. I think RAN Associates, I'm forgetting, they met, did they, I can't remember, did they actually say what they have done by, by year? I don't know.
I don't believe, well, let me double. So it's, see, I.
They did, they, they met that criteria, yes.
I think we need to, um, then look a little bit more at RAN Associates since two of you have felt that those, that that proposal was worth considering. So they did, they did give us the years of their, of the search that they conducted.
Mrs. Cordero, may, may I ask, who, who is on the unanimous list?
Oh, thank you. Um, we have, HYA is on the unanimous list. Leadership is on the unanimous list. And I believe, uh, I'm sorry, Ms. Lamone, did you include Long or not?
I did not.
Okay. You had three or?
I had three. I had HYA, Leadership Associates, and then RAN.
Okay, so HYA, Leadership, um, are the two that are unanimous at this point. So, Ms. Lamone, do you want to perhaps outline for us what you felt, um, was, was strong about the RNA proposal?
Uh, yes, so.
Thank you.
As I mentioned earlier, I thought that, um, specifically their targeted marketing to ensure a diverse pool was probably the most detailed here with the specific examples. Um, although Oakland is not a, uh, similar school district, um, as ours, I do like the work that they've done in Oakland and the search there. I thought that their timeline was pretty detailed, which I liked as well. Um, and although they're based, uh, outside of California, they did give us four, uh, associates, two of which are in California. And, um, that was good. I also thought that their level of involvement, uh, for engaging community was, uh, was good. So those were the things that stood out to me.
Okay, and I, I guess I just wanted to maybe get a little bit more specific. When you say you liked what they did in Oakland, what, can you be specific about what it was?
I, I, specifically, I've been following the Oakland superintendent's search and the changes he's done in Oakland for the last two years since two thousand and nine, so. I guess they.
So you did a good search? Okay, so the ultimate choice was good. And then the, um, the final, or the, the, the consultants that you referenced are the ones on page four? Is that what you're referring to?
Page four.
Because I think we actually have a fifth one on page five.
Yes.
Okay, and.
So, page four and five lists several, so two, two of the five are in California.
Right. And, um, and this, Mr. Guyo is, um, a member of the Oakland school district.
School district, right. I also noted that the president specifically said, um, so Gary Ray uh, said that he had worked with many Spanish-speaking districts. And I don't, I didn't see a lot of that in other proposals.
I agree. I think that is, that is key.
On RAN Associates, a couple of things. Number one, I think it's the only one that said they would help us determine a proper salary. They would do a survey and come back and give us guidelines on salary and benefits. I was also interested in RAN Associates because they, they suggested that in the past they have been successful in having an open forum with the community, which I only think one other might have said that. And the other, uh, one of the lead research recruiters is very definitely has Spanish background and has been very successful. So those were three or four things with RAN Associates that I appreciated.
And can I just actually echo what Mr. Herron said? I found that there were some firms that actually shied away from doing an open forum.
Correct.
And so I know that our community here in Santa Barbara has done open forums for other, um, education leadership positions in our community, so I, I was glad they were at least open to it.
Okay, thank you. I, that's actually quite helpful to me because, giving me a little food for thoughts here, so. Ms. Parker?
Um, what positions had an open forum as part of the hiring process?
So for higher ed, Santa Barbara City College did an open forum for their last president's search. And open forums are actually pretty common at UCSB.
So at the higher level? Um, because that is one thing that we heard at, um, CSBA was essentially that they recommend, not necessarily not doing a forum, but not having a, a committee process and being very careful that if there is some sort of open, um, discussion with, within the community, that the community understands that it's the board's decision to make. I appreciate the points that you raise about that. I mean, again, it's going to come back to me that they just have, um, they've just placed so few people in California. I, I don't have a problem listening to them further, but I don't know that they're going to, um, be able to convince me that although they, they may have experience with Spanish-speaking districts, when I look at the list of where all these other people have been, I know that they're at Spanish-speaking districts. But I, I followed the superintendent in Oakland too, and that was a great hire.
Well, um, so let me just, if we added RNA, so, um, Ms. Lamone, and I don't, I think, let's see. Mr. Herron, you did not include, oh, you included Long, but you felt it was weak.
Yes, yes.
And Ms. Lamone, you did not include Long, and, trying to think of it, who else did you not include?
I, I will share that for me, I included Long, but it, that was also the weakest of my four, if you will.
Oh, Ms. Lamone, you also did not include COSCA.
And maybe we should talk about COSCA because I think that we haven't discussed that proposal in as much depth as we have, um, the others. The, um, one of the things that Mrs. Cordero and I noticed in, in reading that particular proposal was, well, first of all, the, the, um, the, the principle of this firm is the father of the individual who wrote the dissertation, which, um, was interesting in that it basically was promoting use of search firms in superintendent's, um, searches. But, um, the other thing we noticed was that in the letters of recommendation for COSCA, um, those people who were proposed as our associates, with maybe one or two exceptions, were not identified in the letters of recommendation as being the key searchers. In, in other words, Mr. Frank COSCA was usually singled out by name as being the prince, one of the principals in these, these other districts. And yet, yet that, he is not being promoted as, as the one that they would use for us. So that did raise some concerns. The other concern we had was is that a lot of these individuals are all affiliated with one university, the University of Laverne. And, and I think we both thought that having people from a broad spectrum of backgrounds, from a wide variety of academic institutions and life experiences, job experiences, is probably beneficial rather than having an insular view that's maybe kind of homegrown in, in one particular location. So I, I actually, if we needed to win on, I, I'm hearing a good case maybe for RNA that maybe, I, I'd like to hear what other people have to say about COSCA, but, um, but I might be willing to, to entertain a replacement there.
Ms. Herron?
You know, the COSCA group also had no time, no dates or size of districts. And one recommendation letter was two thousand and ten. The rest were two thousand and nine, eight, seven, six, five. They had a lot of current bankier notes. I think they would have been better off using them. You know, that's just, to me, is a mind boggling to get letters that are five years old. But I had them at the bottom of my list.
So this was a California firm, um, and that did, I think, like Ms. Parker, that carried a little weight with me too, um, in terms of feeling more comfortable. But I'm somewhat persuaded by the argument for RNA, and I also, um, would be willing to reconsider. However, I do want to say that since most of us believed that, um, the Dave Long proposal was relatively weak, that it might also behoove us to discuss the possibility of changing that choice.
I personally don't have any problem with going with, for three finalists instead of four. I don't know if my colleagues would be okay with that too.
And would that include HYA, Leadership, and RNA?
Yeah.
So that would eliminate Long and COSCA from our original four. How do we feel about that as a board?
I'm fine with that. I'm fine. And if we did want to do a fourth, I, one more, I could live with. So I can be convinced if we wanted to do a fourth.
The, the only dimension I will make, because I did speak to these personal references, um, the two people I called, uh, relative to Dave Long, Dave Long were very positive. I mean, they, they cited professionalism over and over again. Um, they cited network of contacts, um, a lot of experience in California. So if we were to do four, I probably would advocate with them then.
I'm, oh.
To go down to three, where two of them are out of state and only one is California, I don't feel quite comfortable with that. So even though I thought Long was a weak proposal, their, their background recommendation makes them a player in the game. And so if we're going to add a fourth, I would go with Dave Long.
Okay, well, then let's not be liberal. Let's just, I think we can agree, um, HYA, Leadership, RNA, and Long. Is that, okay.
Oh, and I'm sorry, before we completely finalize it, we haven't talked about COS yet. And I think probably we need to dip our toe in that water. I mean, they all broke it out differently. And depending on how you added things up, it all came to more or less the same amount. I was a little uncomfortable in some instances where travel and expenses seemed to be estimated low in my mind, um, given how much it costs to stay in Santa Barbara. And if you were coming, if, if the consultants were coming from out of state, I thought that was something that, that we just need to be careful about when we actually get them here and talk to them about that to nail those things down. But on the other hand, all the people I talked to today, when I asked them, But on the other hand, all the people I talked to today, when I asked them if there'd been any surprises cost-wise within these firms, they said no, that they all stuck to their contract, so that was encouraging.
Well, and that was my concern about RNA, but I think we can certainly ask them that and question them a little bit more if we do interview them. Coming from out of state, I do wonder sometimes if their cost projections are realistic for California prices. But I think as the other three that we've identified, their proposals are all very, very close in terms of cost. So are we comfortable then with those four? HYA, Leadership, RNA, and Long?
Yes, and I do want to articulate the cost for members of the viewing public that they haven't seen this, that we're talking about sort of in the $27,000 to $30,000 range for hiring a search firm. So I'm comfortable and I'd be happy to move that we finalize our list of executive search firms to those four that we have already named and have them come back to make a presentation to us at a special board meeting in early February.
Okay.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Kerry's unanimously. Great. Okay, thank you very much. I think everybody put a lot of time and effort into going through these, and it helped us move along, I think, relatively smoothly and quickly. So thank you. With that, our next regularly scheduled board meeting will be Tuesday, January 25th, which is next Tuesday. And following that, we will have a special board meeting on Tuesday, February 1st. The meeting on the 5th, oh, no, sorry, on the 25th will be at 6:30. The regular meeting will start at 6:30. We are determining whether we need to start earlier with our closed session because we have quite a number of student discipline cases.
We expect it to start at 5:00.
So we are expecting that we may start at 5:00 for that closed session. Then the meeting on Tuesday, February 1st will start at 5:30 after special meeting. Okay? With that, oh, Dr. Sarves, did you have a comment?
Well, and the following meeting for these search firms to present to us would be a 5:30 meeting.
And that would be on which date, on a date?
That's the following Tuesday.
So the eighth?
The first.
Oh, the first. I'm sorry, the first. I apologize. I'm losing track of my dates. Okay.
Thank you.
So thank you. All right, with that, we can adjourn the meeting.